Good evening, I would like to call to order this meeting of the Winchun and Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, November 14th, 2022 at 6:33. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who is audio or video recording? If you would just raise your hand and make a notation, and I see none, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
If I could make a motion to take item three next out of order, please.
Thank you. I will second that. Motion is to take item three out of order.
Okay, oh, seconded.
Okay, I already did.
Oh, okay.
No problem. All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. So we are on 3.1, change of manager, new stockholder transfer stock of the Carriage House. Good evening. Before we speak though, let me read this into the record. The notice is, Winchun Board of Selectmen, notice of public hearing, change of manager, issuance, transfer of stock, new stockholder, all alcoholic beverages restaurant license. The Winchun and Board of Selectmen, acting as the local licensing authority, will hold a public hearing on Monday, November 14th, 2022 at 6:35 PM in the Town Hall Auditorium, second floor, 109 Front Street, Winchun and, Mass. On the all alcoholic beverages restaurant license of Tamlin Corp., DBA Carriage House Restaurant, 660 Spring Street, for an issuance, transfer of stock, new stockholder and change of manager. Proposed new manager, Joseph Furlong. Anyone wishing to make comments is encouraged to attend. Audi, Labor, and Brie Chair, Winchun and Board of Selectmen. And it was published in the local newspaper. So entertain a motion to open the hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, so the hearing is open. So good evening.
Aye.
We have some paperwork, so you're going to be the new manager?
Yes.
Okay. Questions, comments? So it's a change of officers and directors, change of manager. The A, B, C, C. I'm just taking a quick look at the payments, at, I'm sorry, the documents. All the documents are in order.
Yes, there's a little bit of history here. Joe's been in front of the board a few times. I think there was some paperwork missing, and he was missing at one of the meetings. So with a little lack of communication, we got it all together. Everything's all set on his end. A, B, C, C is satisfied. They just needed it to be advertised in the paper, which we've met those obligations. So at this point, it's just looking for approval from the local licensed authority of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you very much. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. LaPointe.
I would move to approve the common, I can't say it, victuor license for, oh, I'm on the wrong one. No, it's, sorry, never mind. Never mind, I apologize.
That's fine. Do you wish, so wish to make a motion?
No, I withdraw.
Okay. I will move to approve the change of manager, new stockholder, transfer stock for Carriage House as presented this evening.
Seconded.
Okay, made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seen and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye. I neglected to close the public hearing, and I neglected to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak, my grave apologies. The hearing is still open. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who wishes to speak to this issue?
I just want to go back to a nine-to-five job.
So you want us to say no?
Please, put me out of my misery. No, we just got a new chef, so.
Oh, you did?
Awesome, yeah.
Nice, nice.
We went a year, too, wondering why it took so long to cook hamburgers. Then we found out we were on natural grass. We had to do the conversion. We figured that out two weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
That's why it took 25 minutes to cook a cheeseburger.
To cook a cheeseburger, mm.
Yeah, so we did the conversion to the propane, and now it cooks. If only we would have figured that out a year ago, you know.
Wow.
You figured it out now anyway, so.
So now it'll be a lot quicker turnover.
Very good. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
All seconded.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. And you are all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.
I'll submit that today. All right, thank you. You, too.
I will make a motion to take 5.1 out of order.
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Is Amy here? Good evening. Okay, so you're running PJ Slush on Central Street.
A permit, yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. There are no issues from department heads. I do have to note that, I know you've been open for a while, and this process should have been done before you opened. So just for future reference, if you ever look to open another business in town, please just make sure your i's are dotted and your t's across. That would be, that would be good. Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from the board? Seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I would move to approve the common victuor license for PJ Slush, 308 Central Street as presented this evening.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very mu, is there anything that she still needs to sign? Or I know we've got this here.
Nope, no, we'll sign that, and we'll get you a copy so you can post it where it's visible in your business.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, everyone.
You're welcome, thank you.
Good luck.
I move to take 5.2 out of order.
Seconded.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 5.2 is a motor vehicle junk license, class three transfer. I may mis, sorry if I mispronounce the name.
Fiore, Nick Fiore.
Fiore, thank you. Northeast Recyclers, former, is, Toon in Toon is applying to change the manager of record for the business to Nicholas Fiore. This application updates the license to the sole member and owner of Northeast Recyclers LLC, adding Fenix Parent LLC to the license as well as the new business manager. What would you like to tell us?
The previous business manager moved to North Carolina, so he's probably warm and fishing. I can't blame him. But, so, I'm the new manager, and we continue to operate as we always have, and are, you know, very happy to be a member of the community and.
And you're at 800 Spring Street, okay?
Yes, that's correct.
Very good. All the paperwork in order?
Yes, no issues from any of the department heads, and it's just a procedural to change the name of a manager. We have to change the license and come in front of the local licensing.
All right, thank you. I see there were no issues from department heads. Questions or comments from the board? Seeing and hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I would move to approve the updates to the class three motor vehicle junk license of Northeast Recyclers located at 800 Spring Street as presented this evening.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you, Nick. Get your copy of that. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I would move to take item number 5.4 out of order.
5.4, thank you, do I have a second?
No, excuse me, not 5.4, 5.5.
Certainly, 5.5. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, chair votes aye. Good evening, it's that time of year again. Christmas tree sales, Willie's Trees. Now, you're, you're setting up this year where?
Same place, always Lickety Splits and the Ice Cream Place on Main Street.
Okay. And you're looking at, um, excuse me, one second. Things are in a little bit different order, that's all. I don't see his permit in my drop box.
I have it here, yeah, there was no issues, it was sent out, no department head.
Thank you.
He's asking for November 25th through the Christmas Eve, 12/12.
Right, and what times would you be open?
I'll be closed on Mondays this year.
Okay.
But I'll be open Tuesday through Sunday from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Tuesday through Sunday, 9:00 A to 9:00 P. Okay, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
Usually did 9 to 9, but Mondays is too much.
Those are long days.
Yeah. Starting the 25th to the 24th, okay. 11:25 to 12:24. No department head issues, questions, comments from the board? No?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I would move to approve the Christmas tree sales permit for Willie's Trees at 231 Main Street from 11:25, 22 to 12:24, 22 as presented tonight.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We'll get that signed, license over to you.
Awesome, thank you guys very much.
Mary will let you know when it's ready. Thank you, you're welcome.
Thank you. I'll get you a copy.
Audrey? Do you know which one is open?
Thank you, guys.
It's a long one.
You're welcome. Yeah, we can do it.
So, no, so executive session first, or?
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay. Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I would make a motion, I don't have the item number. To please take item number 13, 13.1, out of order, and 13.2 should be need.
You want to do both?
Yes.
Okay. I have a motion to take 13.1 and 13.2 out of order, executive sessions. I will second that. All in favor say aye.
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 Chair votes aye, thank you. So we will go, we need to go into a brief executive session. MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares, I do so declare, to return to open session to continue the agenda, all bargaining units in subsection 2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel regarding to the ARPA premium pay discussion and determination regarding all union and non-union employees. And 3.2, executive session, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel in reference to the Town Accountant Search Discussion. Roll call vote to go into executive session. Mrs. LaPointe.
Aye.
Mrs. Salter.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We are in executive session at 6:48, and we will be back momentarily.
I'd like to call this meeting back into open session at 7:09. Before we move on with the agenda, I would just like to make a note. The board in our executive session voted to ratify an offer to distribute some of our ARPA funds as premium pay for some of the departments in town. The town manager will be reaching out to all of the unions and individuals through their departments. We are offering to Town Hall Library Council on Aging, 750, DPW 1,000, and Dispatch Fire and Police, 2,000. And you'll be receiving notification from the town manager. Next on the agenda, 6.1 Recreation Committee Commission, excuse me, Commission. I thought it was Commission. How are you this evening?
I'm good, thanks.
Good. All right, so what do you have for us this evening?
So I have a few documents that both the Recreation Commission and the Winchon Community Park have voted to approve. The first one being kind of like an operations and policies booklet for how we'll be running things. In the past, we've not had as many events and we've been more of an informal board until a position was created, so we want to have these in place to kind of guide anybody, you know, members or whoever holds my position in the future of how things are run. So that's the first document you see.
Okay. Looks pretty thorough. Is there anything in here that would require being added to charter or bylaws or anything? I mean, talking about a quorum and such like that?
I don't believe so. I believe this all goes with what our current bylaws are. We are looking to do a bylaw change at the May meeting to combine both the community park and the Recreation Commission, which is why all these documents went in front of both committees now.
Okay. Fee schedule?
Yes, so the next document, although the way they have it listed, I think you should probably look at the rental agreement policy first, and then the fee schedule is supplemental to the rental policy.
Is that the performance contract?
Nope, so this is for if people want to rent the park or rent the amphitheater for private events, that's what this would go for. It also includes Gar Park and the gazebo, you know, locations that would fall under recreation's kind of jurisdiction. We are working on a contract that would be for entering into with performers as well, but that's not been officially approved yet.
All the gobbledygook, okay.
Those rules are already posted at the park, but they were posted a few years back. But I felt it necessary just to put them in there so that when people are looking to rent the park, they don't have to go look for the park. They're just right there and they're like, "See, you got it when you did this. You can't say you didn't know."
Sure. And the fee schedule is part of that, you said?
Yeah, and so then the fee schedule is just a supplemental paper that goes with the rental agreement at this time.
Okay. Questions or comments? Mr. Saltback?
Madam Chair, if I can just add a little background to this as well. And first, I want to commend Mrs. Newton for the amount of work that she's put into this. It's been a significant effort. So the catalyst for this really was the soon-to-be official opening of the amphitheater. And as we were going through that process, trying to find ways to make sure that we can kind of take care of and maintain our assets through raising reasonable funds in such a way that it's not overly burdensome for Winchonan residents, but it also, you know, ticks up a little bit extra for folks or organizations that are outside of town, just because realistically, there's no way to maintain these. And I think the important piece that Mrs. Newton hit on was that a lot of these policies were already in place, they just weren't in a centralized location. And so I think a lot of this is an effort to try to professionalize the way we're going about doing recreation in town as we look to grow that role and grow that department potentially within our existing organization. And so the documents that you have before you this evening kind of highlight those points, and it's my understanding they already went before the Recreation Commission and they were in support of this. But as a courtesy, I had asked that Tiffany bring it before the Board of Slockman just to make sure that everybody's on the same page and everybody's in the loop, because I know at times it's sensitive, talking about charging a fee for the use of public spaces in the line that we're trying to walk between being sensitive to that, but also understanding that we need to find ways to maintain these assets.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Anything we can do for you at this point?
Nope, I just wanted to make sure that you guys had these and that, you know, there wasn't any questions or concerns about what we were moving forward with.
Not at the draft stage, thank you.
And I apologize, there's actually more, just one more piece we wanted to cover specifically towards fundraising and kind of revisiting that component. And I think that's another one that we're kind of, that we treat delicately, and we wanted to look at some examples of other communities and what they're doing, just to make sure we better understand where we can step and what is appropriate and not appropriate when it comes down to, you know, soliciting funds or requesting donations and trying to welcome those. And so Tiffany did do a good job of seeking out the town of Acton, and it's always best if we can find other communities that have done it before us, if there's no need to recreate the wheel. And so this is just as info, but it's a packet that Tiffany identified from Acton that highlights the larger scale effectively amphitheater or performing arts park that they have and how they go about raising funds for that every year. And I think it really kind of sets the tone for how much work goes into that. But the other piece we wanted to highlight was, it comes directly from their event and program coordinator who's a town employee, so I know that we had talked about whether or not across the line or issues of perception, but it is something that is permitted, and I do think that we'd still be careful about the way that we ask for those things, but it's a difference between like which department is asking for what. So where the Recreation Commission doesn't really have any control over like the permitting of a large-scale development, like a housing development or something, for example, then there really isn't as much of a concern, and that was kind of legal counsel's determination as well. So I just wanted to pass this on, give the board an opportunity to kind of flip through it and see at least what one other community is doing. I don't think, scale-wise, we would do something to this degree, probably something a little more limited and tighter, but I think it would really provide our employees an opportunity to, I guess, ask for donations in an appropriate and professional way that's very careful about, you know, keeping an eye on that line and making sure we're not crossing it. So I don't know if anybody has any thoughts on that or would be comfortable if we moved forward kind of running this type of playbook.
Thank you. Anything from the board?
Go for it.
I confess I'm at the back of that. I guess I'm scrolling through all of some of the events that they held. Some of these are really cool.
Yeah, some of them are, they do-
Tribute bands and-
They're a much larger amphitheater, so they hold like 3,000 people and we'll hold like 300. So again, the scale, we have to work on that, but they do, they also hold some other similar events, like they also had, I guess, a pet costume parade, and like they hold similar events that we also hold too. So that was kind of fun to see.
Yeah, really. Well, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 7.1 New Business. Mr. Saltback?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just for clarification, are we passing over 5.3, 5.4, and item two?
No, I'll go back to those.
Okay. So 7.1, we have some good news that was touched on briefly at the special town meeting, but I wanted to drill down on that a little bit more. Included in your packet from S&amp;P Global Ratings is the most recent credit rating report for the town of Winchonan, and I'm happy to report that it was very good news. So it's available in the packet in its entirety. I'm going to just touch on a couple highlights throughout that process. We were upgraded from an A+ to a AA-, which at first glance seems counterintuitive. AAA is the best, so it goes in that order for anybody watching at home. So that is good. In their own words, pushes our long-term view from upper-medium grade into the high-grade category. So the biggest piece for people at home that may not be the most financially minded is that an improved credit rating basically means that anytime we go out to borrow for something, we're going to get a better interest rate. So there's a direct financial impact, especially for larger-term borrowing. So when we're talking about borrowing for, you know, something like a $10 million water pipe or something like that, you know, a half a percent, it may not seem like a lot, but it adds up pretty quickly. It's a substantial amount of money. So that's, that's pretty crucial. The other piece, though, I think is it really kind of highlights the work that our team has been doing over the past couple of years since the last time you saw a credit rating go through, but also, you know, the work that I think, that me personally, I had the benefit of building on the work that a lot of you had already been working on before I got to town, and I think it's a reflection of that as well, and I don't want that to be lost in the mix either. They did highlight several points that the rating action reflects their view that the town's improved management, or of the town's improved management and financial position. And they also highlighted that they were upgrading their assessment of the town's management under their financial management assessment from standard to good. So that's very good news and nice to see. One good question that I was asked is, well, like what type of things are they taking into account, what changed? So some of the things that they highlight in the report is our updated capital plan, that we have a new comprehensive capital plan in place that we're actively using. Others include the implementation of new financial policies that I had supported, that this board had supported, and that the finance committee had supported in terms of putting more money away in our reserves and trying to work towards that five to seven and a half percent, building those rainy day funds. And so all-around group effort, and we're going to continue working in that direction. And we're going to continue working in that direction. But I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't something that flew under the radar. So if the board has any questions, I would answer them at this time.
No, like you said, very good news.
Easy one. Well, that's it. Just as info.
Okay, thank you. 7.2, potential solar field discussion. Evan Turner with Aries Power Systems.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And while Mr. Turner gets settled up there, I'll just run you through this real quick. So, Mr. Turner is from Aries Power System. He's discussing, tonight's a preliminary meeting to talk about, propose about 900-acre solar campus. Here in Winchton, it would be one of, if not the largest, solar fields in New England. The project itself would take about two to three years to develop. And the area is zoned residential, however, solar is allowed by right in terms of our zoning in that area. So, Mr. Turner, great to have you with us this evening. He was gracious enough to actually meet with myself as well as the chairs of the planning board, the Conservation Commission, the Board of Selectmen. About a month and a half ago at that time, the chair had asked that I bring this forward on the agenda because it seemed like something that might be moving forward. Mr. Turner will also be meeting with the Planning and Zoning Boards on November 16th, so-
Planning and CONCOM?
Planning and zoning. It'll be a joint one. Conservation Commission, I think, is going to be in early December. So from there, there are many pros and cons to this. It's going to take a long time to develop. There's going to be a lot of conversations. And I'm sure there are going to be a lot of opinions on the topic. So with that, it's all right to turn it over to Mr. Turner.
Good evening.
Thank you, everyone, for your time today. I guess the big, I guess, description for my time sitting here is that big projects like this, and hopefully most projects, but especially something of this potential scale, is not something I want people to hear about through the grapevine. It is too easy to just come and talk to you folks about what I'm looking at and, you know, how I see things. And I think in an ideal world, you know, this is a non-insignificant amount of town. Like just, you know, what I've learned since being here last time about like the water you're bringing in through, over from the Ashfordham side. Like this shares some of that area. There's going to be, even if we weren't looking for any of it, some inevitable overlap between private property development and, you know, the functions of the town, capital T. So I guess, one, I can describe the project and how I see it for you guys a little bit here tonight. And then, of course, provide you a time for any questions. The big timeline feature is that this is a slow process. And on the front end, it's very difficult to know exactly what it will look like at the back. For two big features. One, we haven't delineated that the wetlands over 900-plus acres. So that's a big physical component. That is, you know, the Conservation Commission has that scope and jurisdiction fully. And we don't know what the interconnection to the utility grid looks like yet. So both of those things are really big question marks. But I'm not looking at this campus with an under contract because I don't think those will come out well enough to have a large-scale operation eventually. Even if that takes, you know, all told, five-plus years, totally possible. Solar does not move that fast at this scale. So I guess if the board would like, I can spend five to 10 minutes kind of describing the campus. Is that something that you'd be interested in?
Please.
Wonderful. So the visual you have on the board, and I assume the folks at home also have this, perfect, is the majority of the campus that I have under contract for purchase from the current owner, which is Conservation Forestry LLC, which is a subdivision of Conservation Resources, a large forestry-focused, typically, real estate investment trust. They've had this land for 10-plus years. And before that, I believe it was under the Beals family in some form or fashion, if you go back long enough, like a lot of the land in this area. The land itself is primarily forestry. I think, you know, a little bit of land that might be, you know, quasi-frontage or, you know, sand and gravel work, but it's all forested. It has been recently cut this last summer in the very north area, which holds about, you know, 40% of the acreage. And therefore, solar potential was cut this summer. And then some of the other areas cut in the last several years. The property owners are, as a REIT, they will hold the property for X years. They're coming up on that end of the years. So they are going to sell the property in the future. Otherwise, will not, yeah, it will change hands. So hopefully, for me, that will be the solar work. Most of the campus is in Winchton, but you see a little bit of it crosses the line into Ashfordham. They have very similar solar zoning. But of course, you know, the question of which way you come at that little portion, very much an integrated question with the towns. I don't see this, you know, primarily certainly a Winchton affair, but not, you know, very much the towns together. The, you know, the town line's not some giant demarcation out there in the middle of the woods and the pond. It's, you know, very much its own community despite the two towns. The long-term process for this, I am a one-trick pony, Evan Turner, one guy. And I focus on early-stage development. What I like to do is bring in a heavyweight owner-operator partner to do the development with me, who will, instead of selling, me selling a property and a project to them later, as typical in solar development, you want to have someone start. Someone else does the development. Someone constructs, someone owns. And it might get sold a couple of times, flipped. I like to bring in the permanent owner-operator upfront. I tend to find that has a more consistent product because they'll be at my hip the whole time when we make promises. The people who own it are going to be the ones making those promises. You may have seen in the solar industry at the scale Massachusetts typically works that a lot of times those promises get lost in the mail, lost in the wash between owners. And that's not an ideal circumstance. So, the partner is not determined and finalized yet, but I think in a month it will be. And I'll be excited to introduce them to you. But otherwise, the plan will be the same thing. Scale for this kind of project, this is larger than all the other arrays in town combined. That is a more natural size for solar. The 25- to 50-acre projects you've seen are very much a creation of Massachusetts' solar incentive program. And that's what they encourage people to do. You know, get big enough, but not super big. And therefore, you had, you worked till you fill up the power lines as a solar group. That's what you do. Like you work till the power lines can't take any more solar. You keep finding more land. And in places like Winchton, there is a sufficient land to keep finding space until the power lines fill up. This is a little different. We would look to either upgrade the substation there in East Winchton or build our own somewhere on the campus. But it is, otherwise, you're looking at doing, as a campus, it is possible it is entirely just big utility transmission-scale work, connecting directly to the transmission lines in the back. It is also possible that there is some incentivized smart work, which, you know, the town could have a hand in or normally cannot. There are lots of options in the solar program that do have their benefits and efforts to carry. I guess I'll pause for the moment. Any questions before I keep going?
What's the designation between the blue and the goldish?
Yes, ma'am. Perfect questions like that, that I just think right over. So in that case, the orange are effectively where I expect, right now at least, to leave trees. They are wetlands, say-
I'm sorry, say again. Oh, expected to leave trees. Okay.
So they typically would be wetlands? Yeah, where you see some squiggly blobs in there? Or the edges would be your tree line? And of course, once I'm off-property, it's not something I'm, you know, putting on the map.
Okay.
So that's important for me when I look at this. This is a desktop modeling tool for solar, to see what areas are workable, what acreage becomes out of that. And then, of course, what solar you might result out of certain designs in those areas. In this case, you're looking at approximately 800 to 900 acres out of the 1,400 acres total that I have under contract, right? So that's what kind of carves some of those numbers down. Very unlikely that you'll find less wetlands than I'm showing right now. Usually you get more. So the campus, as it matures, will get a much more accurate picture of what land is workable.
Okay, thank you.
So, you know, in addition to, you know, the email that I sent you guys before giving you some bullet points, you know, the real big one I want to cover here is that ideally, I want, I can do this, of course, normal private property development, that's normal procedure. But as I said before, there are things where it overlaps where I think cooperation could be beneficial to this area. By example, bringing the water pipe down North Ashfordham Road, which is a public way, but which would be very, you know, used for the solar campus, which, because it defines the edge of one of those large properties. That obviously, if I'm doing a solar array back there, I'm probably upgrading that road. It's a dirt road. You know, it goes from pavement to gravel to dirt, basically a logging road. And things like that that I think we could coordinate smartly on. There are just, you know, a couple overlaps there. In a perfect world, you know, this is a big project. I'd like the town to have some engagement because how you would like to shape it, what you'd like to see as a town, does matter. You know, so very much a dance partner. You know, I'll lead the dance because that's my job. But hopefully, we've got an engaged partnership where the things that are important to you, I can consider as I make the plan. And I don't have the plan finalized yet because I'd like, you know, some of your input over time. But, you know, whether that's, you know, using potentially some town properties to help orchestrate power line runs because it may be very much worth it if I could lease that from the town. And of course, you would decide how I could and would cross it if so. All the way to, do you leave corridors for wildlife in the mix? Do you leave trails for X, Y, and Z? A big feature that I think is on the up, and I've done for a couple arrays in Massachusetts now along those lines, it looks ideal to be able to, the screen went away, if someone needs to move a mouse, thank you. There is a structure that works well that would have me, I, the solar group, donate the land to Winchton and, of course, keep the solar rights under the permits that would theoretically be granted, which, you know, would conserve, in theory, you would take it for conservation, although you, of course, don't have to. Which just strikes a better conservation-development balance. Of course, in that result, you'd have an easement or a lease. You'd have to make up any taxes that moved across the ledger from private to public land. Typically, the underlying property's taxes, not the taxes on the solar proper. That would still happen like normal. But I've done that with a couple properties now. And it just seems to strike a better balance of why wouldn't you conserve the land while you're using so much of it? That long-term, you know, no public, no public cost. I do the solar, I'm happy. And then the conservation, you know, takes everything I don't use, of course, naturally. And then whenever the solar's done, the conservation takes the whole land unencumbered. And the other angle there is, this is a big array. I personally think that in the fullness of time, you will see businesses making decisions to site themselves near large-scale power. There are businesses that are very energy-hungry, that are financially advantaged by being near solar arrays where I can sell them energy straight out of the array instead of going through a network. So things I am looking into, these are more ideas than plans, but they are ideas that are happening in the market now. You know, there may be businesses that look to Winchton as an interesting place to come, you know, put some facilities in because they are so energy-centric. And having an array like this that you can orchestrate the power out of, you know, it's kind of like if you could get 1990s-priced gas for 30 years, like that would be something you could build stuff around. The power is the same way. If I can sell power right out of the array at a good price, and I can do that indefinitely because I know it pays my bills, a lot of places would like, you know, theoretically to come plug into that kind of, you know, resource. In addition to normally selling power through the network. So I think the thing I would like to progress with you folks, with, of course, your permission and input, how I've done this in other towns, Sandwich, Massachusetts, and Falmouth, Massachusetts, two Cape Cod projects where the land was valuable enough to want to conserve. That's the item there, is that I worked with the town manager to put together a non-binding memorandum of understanding. The town manager took the lead on behalf of their select board and to figure out what things you'd like to consider. Of course, no one's at any obligation. You guys are never at any cost, both to organize the thoughts and try to give us some boundaries, if we have them, on what we'd like to think and consider. And then that's something eventually, for Sandwich, by example, the first one I did of these, starting back in 2017, that eventually, you know, worked on between myself and the town manager there and then comes back to the select board eventually for consideration. Of course, I'm sure they'd see it in the interim. And that just gives us a dialogue to work on what's important and see if we can fight for it.
Thank you. Obviously, high-level, very beginning here, questions, comments?
Your company would pay for whatever cost for determining where the wetlands are, right? Not the town?
Oh, yeah, of course, all private stuff. So basically, building a big farm. So I will, one of the things I'll need to talk to the CONCOM about, it will be a very large delineation effort this upcoming summer. So none of this no-cost ever fall on the town. Even the stuff I would theoretically contemplate, you know, how do you orchestrate a donation? How do you, I would expect to pay the town for its cost to hire the appropriate law firms, if you don't already have them, to be in your corner and advise you on that. You know, the town should never be floating any costs of any of this.
And it is typical when we do peer review that we charge that back to whatever developer is looking to do a project.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question, like, you know, as I look at this map and I see, like, the wetlands that you have highlighted, like, how do you build such a big project with so much wetland around and not disturb them?
So you have to stick to the jurisdictional and, I guess, legal boundaries of the Conservation Commission. There will be wetlands adjacent to anything if you get big enough. So in this case, the wetlands look like a portion of it. But I couldn't tell you, there are some areas where you may not build. Like in the middle area, in the middle of the orange blobs, down and right, please? Like up and left, the middle one? There we go, up and right a little bit? Perfect, like in between those orange areas, right? You may find that it's just not worth, you know, putting solar rays in the middle. That's part of the shaping it, to figure out what's the right balance of, you know, hitting it all the way. And you don't always have to swing for, you know, a grand slam every time. You look at every single situation. So you will work up to, in theory, the Conservation Commission tends to have a 100-foot buffer to wetlands of undisturbed or maybe lightly disturbed area. In this case, you probably don't need to disturb it at all. You have the scale. And then everything outside that is upland. So if you were, just kind of like if you were building a farm or a cow pasture, it's just big.
Real big. So, so total, if I remember the numbers, about 1,400 acres total? And from that, you expect 800 to 900 developable?
That's what I have now. So I always expect that to size down a little bit. I would tell you my experience as a developer here in New England, and specifically Massachusetts, it is rare to, impossible to end up using more than 55, maybe 60% of a property. So I would not be surprised to end up with, out of 14, 700 acres.
Sure.
Yeah, that would be a pretty right-down-the-fairway result when all the wetlands are delineated and all the other decisions could be made.
Okay.
Can I ask one more question?
Yes.
So what makes you, like, you as a developer, why did you select this area? What do you look for, like?
Large, isolated tracts of land with interconnection to the grid capability. The trick is, you know, what, the frustration I have with the current solar program, which it's, otherwise, I owe a lot of work to it. It has been a generally success. But the challenge is that it creates arrays at the scale that you end up putting next to houses. You don't get big enough to put them, like, to build miles of power lines to get them away from houses. So you end up going where the power lines go. Will they go where the houses are? Therefore, you end up putting these things right across someone's backyard, just the next property over. This is 1,400 acres with no neighbors. Maybe like there's two, one neighbor in the bottom third of that. Like, they're not anywhere close. You might have 800 feet of, you know, buffer between you and the next neighbor. So when I find about what impacts a community, you can't, of course, if you're doing the scale of work, you were going in New England, cut down trees. It just, everywhere is tree. If it's not a farm that's conserved or in working, it's houses, roads, water, buildings. There's no magical open fields that are just unused but not conserved. But it's about visibility. You don't want to change the nature, the day-to-day of an area, of a town. You've got to go find isolated tracts of land that are dry enough, correct slopes, that kind of stuff.
Okay. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Mrs. Saltback? I don't understand the technology and the interplay, but how much pushback do you get, if any, from the national grids and whatever other electric suppliers?
It will take us probably two years to figure out what we can plug in. There's a whole application process. You try to look at places smartly for what is achievable because you can simulate what you think they'll say based on what's plugged in now to the grid. It's definitely a give-and-take process in the application. Because they're very diligent about figuring out what you can plug in, what you need to pay for it, what upgrades you call, and which ones you want to engage in. You know, so they may say you can plug in X and pay us Y. But if you plug in, you know, 2/3 of X, you pay very little. There might be a real breakout number there for, and that's where I can't say exactly how much I would like to build just yet. So their pushback, maybe not the right word. Complication is probably a better word that you have to work through. And of course, the- And of course, they'll plug anything in if you're willing to write them a blank check. That doesn't, of course, pencil out in most cases. So a lot of this challenge with the solar industry you've seen in town, as well as elsewhere in Massachusetts, when people have hit the limits of the distribution network, the wooden poles on the regular streets, you, they can only hold so much solar energy and power in general, but solar generation. And then the whole program that's built on using those breaks down. And you get in like, you know, just, uh, fights is not the right word, but challenging situation with the national grid who has to run the network for everybody. And solar developers want to plug in more and then you, you build new power lines, you upgrade substations. You know, there may be 10 or 15 different people in that group talking about that who need to pay national grid or leave or do something. It's a very challenging situation to continue doing it the way we've done it so far as a state industry. So this is the natural evolution of that, which is going bigger. So you've got the weight to, uh, do the upgrades you need. And it's generally just you and not 15 different developers trying to talk to national grid together.
Thank you. Uh, no more questions at the moment, I guess. So the next step would be you'd be working with the town manager?
With, of course, your permission, I'm not going to, that's one of the things here that if you, I guess, would say it's okay or direct him, whatever the right version of that is. I don't want to assume that I can just start bombarding, uh, Justin with a thousand emails on all the things I'm thinking about. Uh, but that would be in theory, the next step to, uh, you know, start fleshing out what it might look like. And in the past, I found you with Bud down in Sandwich, uh, town manager in Sandwich, that it worked very well to work through the town manager to then, you know, come to the boards. Uh, you know, a bit of a, you know, single point, uh, to heard things before I, you know, present to the boards.
Yeah, I definitely wanted that single point. Yes. Mr. Crowder?
One of the points that the gentleman highlighted was the update of the power stations. If you go back to the summer with the, with the power flips that we had, um, the substation that is on Route 140 is undersized. So this would be working to correct that if that substation was upgraded. And that's where this project, I'm on the map in the blue, that's, that's where this would, would plug in. So this, this would fix an ongoing issue that we currently have now.
Okay, thank you.
To give you some color to that whole electrical network, it's such a big deal in my world. The national grid, when they had these thousand projects that came across like, think, uh, 2018, 19, huge solar push, you may have remembered, cooled down a little bit since then. They got so many applications for the, you know, 25 and 50 acre stuff around towns that they kind of had to pause everything and study it as a statewide grid. Because when you put 150 of those together, it looks like a giant power plant. You have to study that on the transmission network. And what they did coming out of that in large part, very complex Department of Public Utilities, you know, state legislature goals, distribution, you know, generation utilities, who need to, of course, follow their own regs. They came up with system improvement plans. And then that's so like the one here, they kind of studied and said, all right, we think we can plug in 160 megawatts in Winchendon and Gardner. We'll do the upgrades prospective or preemptively. We know more solar is coming, so we'll build enough capacity to plug in more. Because that makes sense. You don't, you know, widen a la, a street, one lane at a time. You, you go from two all the way to four. You don't, you know, do three, then four, then five and six one at a time. So this area was about 165 megawatts of upgrades, which would be three times what you have in town now. Uh, probably 30 to 50 of that is still spoken for from legacy projects and some battery stuff that picks up. But there does look to be 100-plus megawatts of connection capacity. Broadly speaking, that the network is, looks like it can hold with some upgrades that they're planning to do and are underway now. So part of me selecting this site, to come back to your question, ma'am, was I'm looking for places that the utility says, yeah, this makes sense to plug in some solar. So in this case, my hope from a business perspective is I claim all of that capacity because I want to do that business. Otherwise, if this never happened, I think you'd expect to see in the fullness of time, maybe not like, not two years from now, but five and 10 more 25 and 50 acre jobs pop up. Because they'll have upgraded stuff eventually, they'll build the power lines out eventually. And then you'll get this acreage in bits and chunks. You know, why this is big in an area, it's kind of like squeezing a balloon with solar. Uh, if you don't do it big somewhere or anywhere, you'll just push it somewhere else. It's the same volume. So I like big organized plays like this that hopefully, uh, can, you know, provide some more focus and value rather than, uh, you know, anywhere, everywhere approaches that have its, uh, limitations. I'll be polite about it, limitations. Uh, even as someone on the side of, you know, doing that stuff, I've seen the goods and bats and, you know, the costs associated. And then of course, you know, not that we have, we can touch on it more with Justin because it's a better, you know, thing for paperwork and spreadsheets. Uh, you know, there is meaningful tax revenue associated with these arrays relative to the, the tree value. Uh, you'll be using a 200-megawatt benchmark, uh, for how many get, get built in the field, a 700. Uh, actually, do you know any of your recent solar pilots by chance off the top of your head? Uh, one of the ones, my favorite was, uh, down in Douglas, Mass, where the town just had a group study what they could charge all their developers. They were very much like you, you know, 12 projects in town, mostly wooded, uh, area. You know, small town core, big town suburban, uh, near suburban. And they called it 7,500 a megawatt. That was what their consultant said they could charge me. So that's what they gave, you know, six developers in town. That's the rate, congratulations. You know, at that rate, just as a benchmark, because I got to pick something, this would look like a $1.5 million a year property tax on the array itself. And then there is, you know, you talk to your assessor, there'll be some amount of taxation on the underlying land. You know, that is a separate thing that is very closely related, but is not quite the same. And then if there's a public entity arrangement, which I will work through on paper with you because it is very step-by-step in the SMART program, there is the potential that the town could see 50 to 100% more revenue, uh, within the SMART program's specific structure for a portion of this area. Not all of it, probably a portion of it. But it can be pretty meaningful. What has been lacking from the solar industry, and now I'm just a little bit of a monologue with everyone at home and here, thank you for the time. The solar industry is very good at providing diverse, or diffuse benefits. You know, you build the array here and then everyone gets a little cleaner power and you guys get some tax money, but it's not a ton, but it's not, it's not nothing. But it's, you know, in the sense of a broad goal, de, decarbonize, electrify more. But that means the host towns and communities just don't quite get the oomph out of it they need to. So when I look at this big kind of stuff, I'm trying to find ways to make it better for the host community in addition to other folks. So, you know, keeping the revenue here when possible, uh, is a priority for me. Because I think, it's, it's great if, you know, customers all across Massachusetts can buy this power, but I mean, if I've got to offer them a discount to buy clean solar power and that's kind of how the SMART program works for community solar, I'd rather try to keep that revenue here in Winchendon. If I have, I mean, for me, it's just money on a spreadsheet. So that's something that I'm hoping we can achieve. But if it doesn't work, great, still have a good, big, private array. Or the other alternative possibility, I think in the full, next two to three years, they'll evolve the solar program incentive-wise. And it'll address some stuff at this scale and we may have a different conversation. Because solar just has to grow. We've done version 1.0, you're always meant to evolve out of version 1.0 for ground-mounted stuff. I'd like to get to version 2.0. I think that's quite possible in the next two to three years. They roll out a revision, it'd be on schedule every, you know, five or so years.
Yeah. Oh, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
What's a what pleasure? Move forward, have him work with, uh, with the town manager?
Absolutely.
Okay. So yes, please, if you would, uh, work with the town manager, um, Mr. Turner, and, um, develop whatever the next step is.
Yes, ma'am. I thank you everyone's time and thanks to the folks at home.
Thank you.
Uh, I'll be reaching out to you probably later this week or early next week. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a great night. 7.3. Grant Award. Mrs. Saltback, when you get to it, yep?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so there's some supplemental materials for this one as well that I wanted to run through the group real quickly. So since I got to town, I've been working pretty closely, um, with some privately owned parcels in town in an effort to try to get them back online. And one of the larger of those is the White's Mill Building, um, up in Winchendon Springs along the New Hampshire border. So when we're looking at those type of parcels that are kind of underutilized, what I like to do is try to sit down and look at what the obstacles are and, um, chip away at them one by one and, and make it a little bit easier to try to make those, um, pieces of land useful. So for this one, I've been working with Peter Gagliardi for the past year and a half. Um, he was recently re, uh, recently retired executive director of Wayfinders. Um, he had an over 30-year career basically doing exactly this kind of work, working with communities to bring underutilized parcels back online, um, oftentimes underutilized industrial parcels. Um, and so Peter has really been a wealth of experience. He's been working on behalf of the property owners. Um, one thing that, that I was very aware of, um, when I got to town was that there, there's a little bit of a complex relationship between the town and that specific property. And so what I've been working on is trying to, um, kind of start fresh, hit a reboot, um, try to get something going up in that area of town that would be beneficial to the property owners, um, but also beneficial to the town, to the community at large. And so, um, as part of that effort, one obstacle we did identify was that dam, um, located on that property. And just to give you an idea on the map here, um, there's a large earthen dam on this side, um, that kind of artificially builds up this whole area. So a lot of it is wetland. Um, there are some homes up at the further end, which I think kind of created some, some of that animosity in the past about potentially drawing down that body of water. It is a man-made body of water. Um, if the dam is breached, it would reduce that down to about a 10-foot wide river or creek, um, what it was originally, and then it would be pasture land back there. Um, the biggest issue though is that dam, it, it's not just that we don't like dams, it's that it's a high-hazard dam as identified by the state. So issue being that if that were to go, um, unfortunately, the direction it would roll is straight down Maple, um, and straight through downtown. So as marked as a, a high-hazard dam, there is potential for loss of life. I don't think, I don't think it's a high potential. Um, but the financial damage is another impact as well to, um, people's private property, but also public infrastructure. So, um, with that said, I have been working with them to go through the state program to remove high ha, high-hazard dams. It basically provides resources for that purpose. Um, and we were able to secure a $740,250 grant from the Executive Office of Energy Environmental Affairs Dam and Seawall Program. Say that one 10 times fast. Yeah. I definitely don't stand in my office practicing that in advance of the meeting tonight. Um, but it's a, a tremendous resource. And I think the important part is no matter who owns that property, whether it's the current owners, previous owners, future owners, the value of fixing and removing that obstacle on that property is going to stay in town, no matter who owns it. Um, and I think the most important piece is by removing that obstacle, it makes that parcel more appealing to future potential owners, um, who could develop that property. And when I'm talking about development here, for anyone that's not familiar with the parcel at home, um, we're not, it's not logging, it's not like something, you know, that we're, we're just talking about, which is okay and it has its place. Um, but, but this is an existing, um, you know, seven-building mill structure that I think any, anybody should be familiar with this one and we'll get on Street View real quick. Um, so there it is, you know, in all its glory. Unfortunately, it's kind of just been sitting there. Um, if we could get something going on this property, I, I think there's high potential for mixed-use commercial residential development using the existing structures, um, or at least six out of seven of them. Um, and in doing so, you'd be bringing this property back online. It would be generating tax revenue, so it takes, you know, some of that pressure off of all of our other residents and businesses. Uh, but you'd also be preserving this historic asset. And I think for Winchendon in particular, given its unique history in manufacturing, it's important to try to preserve these buildings when you can. Um, so there's high potential there. Down the road, potentially applying for, um, the state mass works program, I think would be a good opportunity for a public-private partnership if a development does go in that place where we could secure up to $2.5 million, for example, to pull our water and sewer out to that corner of town. And the state would pay for it entirely. Um, it would also help resolve some of our issues in terms of, uh, we talk a lot about the water sewer rate, bringing on more users and having more usage. And that would help, um, kind of draw down or stabilize the increases that we've seen for water and sewer. That'd be another benefit if we could get, um, some residences and businesses in this parcel down the road. Of course, that's something years down the road. And we're just kind of like laying the groundwork, like I said, removing some of these obstacles. When and if the time comes that somebody wants to step forward to improve this parcel, that would very much be a community conversation. I would expect that any developer that would come through the door would want to work hand-in-hand with the town to make sure what they are putting in there, um, kind of meshes and makes sense with the community's needs at that given time. Um, so with that said, a lot of talking, um, but a pretty substantial amount of money that we're going to get for, uh, an infrastructure improvement in that corner of town. Does anybody have any questions?
Not a question, I guess, but of course, this is still privately owned.
Correct.
I just, I don't want to be a Debbie Downer, but how do the, are we working in conjunction with the present owners? They're aware of everything that we're doing. I don't want the town to get hurt or lose anything.
No, but that...
We, we do not, bottom line is, this is not our property, but we're putting time and effort into, I see the potential 100%.
Nope, excellent question. So, um, and I guess just to reiterate, so we are providing assistance. We weren't doing the heavy lifting on this one. Um, they have their consultant, Mr. Gagliardi, as I referenced. Um, but I think more so lending support on...
I'm sorry, back up. So Mr. Gagliardi is representing the owners?
Correct.
Oh, that's what I missed.
He's not ours, sorry. Yeah, I, I should have highlighted that. So he, he's not with us, those aren't resources.
I knew it wasn't with us, but I didn't realize there was a connection with the owners, okay.
Sure, yep. So, but those aren't resources that we're expending, that's resources that they're expending. Um, and so I think for this one, especially a property that scale, um, I agree with you 100% that we want to make sure the town's best interests are protected. I think if anything, that's why I've been involved, um, in the project and trying to, you know, brush the dust off that one. Um, because like I said, given some recent history there, um, and some potential pitfalls. And I think that the town may be a little, um, for the wiser, whi, which is sometimes a good thing. But, um, for any, you know, decommissioned property in town, whether it be this one or another one or the RHI building, um, any of them, from an economic development perspective, um, where that's very much one, you know, component of my role, I will always advocate for those businesses, um, all of them equally across the board. So there's no, you know, no special treatment, um, IGA, like, pick one, we have a lot of them. Yep, but excellent question and thank you for clarifying.
You're welcome. Questions, comments? All right, thank you. Uh, next up is another grant award. Excuse me, $200,000 mass development for Four Summer Drive.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this one was directly steered by us because it is an actively owned, um, town property, Four Summer Drive, the, the Bullspit property, as you frequently hear it referred to as. We still do have ownership of that. We received a $150,000 award from the same program back in 2021 that helped kind of jumpstart this process. I'm happy to report, um, that we managed to go back and pull in an additional 200,000. So it's about 133% increase over the original award for the same purpose, um, helping us kind of remediate the building, clean up dirty soils. The important component here is that by, um, securing grants to clean up that property, that's freeing up dollars that the folks at Bullspit, um, would have had to spend that they can now direct towards investing in the community, investing into that building, um, you know, putting in something higher grade, but also helping them move forward faster. I think that when that project, um, first got off the ground, the landscape between then and now has entirely changed in terms of construction costs. And that's a big component as well. Um, and I've, I've heard it a lot over the past year and a half. It seems like every two weeks, there's a new rumor, um, and people concerned that, you know, are they moving forward? Are they moving forward? Um, and securing funds like this will very much ensure, um, and kind of cement in that they're going to be moving forward. So, uh, we have received the contract amendment for those funds. We will be receiving them shortly and that's work, um, that they can do throughout the winter.
Very nice, thank you. Questions, comments? All right. Our 7.5, request for proposal, RFP, for the FY '22 auditing services. Mr. Saltback?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this is just an update. Um, as you may recall, we discussed this at length, uh, over the course of a couple meetings. It is something that the audit committee has been steering. It is something that the audit committee has been steering. They did send a draft to me, which is attached to this memo, to solicit auditing services through an RFP. It will be going out, should the board be okay with the drafts, releasing it for tomorrow, and it will be in time or back in time for the December 6 deadline at 4:00 PM. So does anybody have any questions about that or concerns in reviewing the document?
Questions, concerns?
I did, yeah, I do have a question. So I know that the firm that I work for, we do, you know, nonprofit audits, and a lot of times, those agencies will reach out to us because they know that we do it and say that they're, you know, they're looking for a new auditor or ask us, are we reaching out to any municipal auditing companies? Not, I know that we're posting and advertising, but are we like physically calling them and saying, letting them know that it's, you know, we're looking for a new auditor and-
Mm-hmm. Yep, great question, excellent point. So for this, we do advertise it everywhere where legally required.
Yeah.
But in addition, we do oftentimes make sure it gets in people's hands, and that is public information, we keep track of it, and, you know, we'll typically at minimum do three, we'll solicit from three specifically.
Okay.
And then, but it's also publicly open to anybody that happens to see it where we post it as required.
Yeah, yeah, I get that. I just want to make sure that, well, I guess they're always looking anyway, but municipal auditing companies are aware that we're looking.
We don't want them to miss it.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, okay.
Looking further? All right, thank you. Before we move on to old business, we do, I'd like to go back and take up 5.3, if we could. Class 3, motor vehicle used license dealer, transfer. Questions, comments, anything? It looks like there's no issues from department heads. This is-
5.3?
DeMados, DBA, NPM Auto Sales. I'm sorry?
I said 5.3. That was northeast, that's the one we did, right?
No, we did 5.2, that was-
Oh, northeast is in my 5.3 Dropbox.
Nicholas Fiori, yeah, the numbers are-
I see.
Off a fraction. So the permit is up on the board, used car sales, 12 to 5, Monday through Saturday. Any questions or comments? There are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I move to approve the new license for class 2 used cars of NPM Auto Sales, 230 Bolinsville State Road, as presented this evening.
Second. Thank you, made in seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. 5.4, Christmas tree sales permit, Little Anthony. 678 Spring Street. Do we have the times that they're looking to be open? Oh, I just found it, I apologize. November 14 through December, which is today, December 24, seven days a week, 11:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and this is at Little Anthony's. I would say there are no, no department head issues. Questions or comments from the board? I will move to approve the Christmas tree sales permit to Little Anthony's at 678 Spring Street from 11:14:22 to 12:24:22 as presented this evening.
Seconded.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Old Business, Mr. Saltback, 8.1.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just as a reminder, I think item 2 is still outstanding.
Yes.
If you want to, okay.
I'll do the comments at the end of the meeting.
Whenever works for you.
Thank you.
So just as a reminder, the fiscal year '23 goals and objectives, something I brought forward to the board back in July. There are some items in here, and I don't know, Madam Chair, if you received feedback from your peers, but I have been moving forward on them nonetheless.
Yes.
So if there's any comments at this time, and then I believe another comment we discussed as well, is historically, I think part of the conversation was whether or not this was tied into my review, and just as info, that's typically done upcoming in December, if that's agreeable to the board. So if anybody has any questions on this, or if they're okay with me continuing to move forward for the remainder of the year, I would take any input.
Yeah, I did not hear from anyone. Any questions, comments this evening?
No, keep going.
Thanks.
Please continue moving forward. Now, as far as timing, and I should know this.
I'm not reading your mind well, sorry.
Yeah, I apologize. As far as the actual review, if we do that, in December, we would want to have this evaluation done prior to that, obviously. So what are we thinking as far as the timeframe?
Madam Chair, if I could make a recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Saltback.
You have an upcoming meeting on the 28th, where I think you could maybe establish the ground rules and solicit feedback. And then your only meeting in December, given the way the holiday falls, is on December 19th.
So is the board all right with bringing this back on the 28th to finalize and then move forward from there?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll then be back on the agenda for the 28th. Thank you, Mr. Saltback, for rescuing me there, I was-
You're welcome.
8.2, Beach Street Rehab.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So you may have seen that the Tu family down on Beach Street has recently been listed. I just wanted to run the board, excuse me, through a recap in the community as well, and just kind of give them an idea of where we're at and where we're going with those properties. We did actually just have today separately but parallel a public input session for a Beach Street infrastructure upgrade project. We're going for a CDBG grant to do a full rehabilitation of the road and infrastructure between spring and summer. But separately, we are the owners, or I should say the redevelopment authority now, are the owners of the garage in the Tu family down on the Spring Street, end of Beach Street. So just to run you through it, it was a process that I had initiated shortly after I arrived in town. It did go to a special town meeting where the town voted to accept those properties in lieu of taxes. Shortly thereafter, the property owner's attorney had passed away, and we had, we were kind of stuck in a holding pattern because all of his active cases were passed on to the state of Maine. And so we were waiting to have somebody assigned to that specific case for the property owner. So I started that in December of 2021, a couple months after special town meeting. They assigned the case in January of 2022, which then meant getting that new attorney up to speed and then coordinating with our legal counsel in February of '22. So from there, on April 11 of 2022, I brought it forward to the Board of Selectmen for your approval to officially sign off on the property. That deed was recorded, and several weeks thereafter, it went before the redevelopment authority. On July 18, they discussed the property in a public meeting. They debated whether or not to rehab the residents themselves or sell the property as is to a contractor. If it went the latter route there, we would put up some guidelines contractually so that, you know, we didn't just sell to somebody who didn't know what they were doing, that did it cheaply and took too long or just sat on it for a decade. So there are some stipulations within that, that they have to use certain type of materials, that they have to complete the work within a year, that they have to have, you know, some experience doing rehab work. And so that there's some kind of safety net in there. The most important number crunching I could do is if the property was worth, say, $130,000, and the redevelopment authority put $100,000 into it, and then we sold it for $230,000, or if we just sold it for $130,000, either way, we're netting $130,000. And that's the important takeaway. I know some people are kind of hung up on that. So with that said, we went out, we had the House of Praise, it hit the market on October 19th, and we have received some offers that are pretty close to what we're asking. So the Four Seas Garage, taking that down, we're going to be working on throughout the winter. We wanted to have it down before the winter, but the funding to take that down is contingent upon the sale of the home. We need to get the funds from the sale of the home before we can take down the garage. So we're planning on doing that first thing this spring. We're going to use the winter to go through the Conservation Commission and do all the appropriate permitting. It is a structure that's within five or 10 feet of a waterway, so there's going to be some extra hoops that we have to go through as we go through that process. But I just wanted to make sure that the community was aware that it wasn't something we forgot about, it's very much moving forward. And I think, much like any other project, this project had a lot of work behind the scenes that a lot of people frequently, unfortunately, don't see. But it's moving forward, and we're pretty excited about it. The plus here is that once that garage is down, and if we get that CDBG grant to do the infrastructure improvements on Beach Street, we'll be able to temporarily use that area as a lay-down area for construction. And then once they get out of town, we'll be able to go through, you know, put grass there, trees, and a nice walkway, and really make it something nice. So does anybody have any questions about that?
No, thank you. 8.3, Old Murdoch Update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So attached to this memo, you'll see an invitation for bid for emergency repairs. This is another one that we've received a lot of questions about, people are kind of wondering what's going on. So our OPM and our architect have been developing a scope of work for some limited long-term repairs and temporary protection of the old Murdoch throughout the winter. I think the piece for this, I want to stress, is that it's, we're estimating it's going to cost about $40,000. No, it is not $40,000 just for that tarp. They are going to be doing some preliminary masonry work, removing some masonry, things that when they do get through to the full-blown construction, they're not going to have to do because we're doing it now. So we're trying to kind of get them off on a good footing. And I think, I mean, this project is another good example. You know, I've been here for about a year and a half, and people are wondering, well, what's going on with the old Murdoch? But I think for anybody that's been involved with it, we started at zero on that one. We had to go out and get an OPM because of the dollar threshold of the project, that took some time. Once we had an OPM onboard, we had to go out and hire an architect. Now that the architect's onboard, they had to fit us into their schedule, they'll be working on designing throughout the winter, but we'll have it shored up before the snow flies ideally. There are four points here that I wanted to list that kind of highlight the scope of work in terms of the removal of existing sheeting, the removal of any loose masonry, the installation of new sheeting, as well as inspection of additional area of brick masonry. One benefit of going this route is that in taking down the sheeting, our OPM and our architect, who weren't onboard when it first went up, are going to get their first full, unobstructed view of the structure. And so that's an important piece as well as they're going through the design process. So once we do receive that proposal coming up on November 16th, I will bring that before the board at your meeting on the 28th, just to give you an update of who we secured.
Thank you.
No action needed at this time.
Okay. Well, I think we're supposed to have some snow flying Tuesday night into Wednesday, so we'll see.
We'll see.
All right, 8.4, review of ARPA funds and initiatives. Mr. Saltback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I've been working closely with Mr. Crowder, who's been doing an excellent job of keeping track of this spreadsheet, to identify different areas for some of the money that we had already set aside, where that ended up being a little bit of a cost saving. So one that was identified was $15,000 that the board had approved for water-sewer oversight for the Central Street project. We only ended up using $2,053 of that, so we'll be turning a little bit back. With that said, there is another expense that we wanted to put before the board to kind of feel out if you felt like it would be a good use of the funds. So the portion of the project that the state funds is, it's substantial, but fairly no-frills or bare bones in the fact that it's exclusively pavement, it's exclusively sidewalk, it's exclusively curbing, but when it comes to the finer points of the project. So for example, particularly if you look up by the RHI building, the concrete, we opted not to pour the sidewalks from the building directly to the curb, there's a buffer there. So that buffer is going to be landscaped. And as part of that, we're looking to have tie-in bond specifically designed in those areas, plantings that are resilient to salt and other like downtown environmental factors. We don't want to spend a lot of money to put things in that are just going to die in a season or two and then, you know, rip them all out. And so what we're requesting is a portion of money for tie-in bond to do that landscape design for any of those stretches downtown. And you'll have, excuse me, Brian, if you could remind me how much that was? It was $5,000 even. The other added benefit is if there's any remainder on the state-side budget, if we pay for the design, there is an opportunity for us to go back to them and have them pay for the plantings, it's not a guarantee, but there's an opportunity there. So I wanted to check with the board, see if that's an expense that you thought would be worth it, it would be, you know, not going out like planting pansies or something, it would be for like trees, grasses, like ornamental grasses, other things like that, that'll be there for a long time. So do you have any thoughts on that?
So this would be $5,000. Do you have a design drawn up?
Mm-hmm.
Just the design. What are the qualifications of tie-in bond when it comes to landscaping, nursery plants, et cetera, et cetera? To me, having them design a building or something like that is fine, but if you're talking, I understand there's certain criteria that you're looking to meet in the plantings, but wouldn't a master gardener or a master landscaper be a more appropriate source for that type of information, and it's certainly a lower price?
Excellent question. So the benefit of going with tie-in bond is that they very much specialize in horizontal construction. You see it a lot for water and sewer, but downtown reconstruction, like we're doing right now, we're not the only community that they've done that scale of a rebuild in. And so they do have people on their team that specialize in that specifically, you know, horticulturalists, that kind of understand that type of work and things that thrive in certain hardiness zones and-
Right.
-all of those pieces. I think the added benefit is that they're already on the job, they're already out there providing oversight, and it wouldn't be, I guess, the inconvenience of going out, finding somebody, getting them up to speed, and then trying to have them coordinate with what tie-in bond involves, as they're already doing out there, they'd be coordinating with themselves.
Okay. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair, I have one question. No, I know it's not a lot of money, but didn't we tell the Finance Committee and Mr. Kane that before we spent any of this money, that we would let them know in advance?
Mm-hmm.
You know, have we done that, or will you do that before we?
Yep, great question, we're very much committed to that, and Madam Chair has actually been very good about reminding me to notify the Finance Committee.
Okay, I just want to make sure we do that.
So we'll make sure that they're in the loop. And actually, I did in advance of this meeting, reach out to Mr. Kane to make reference that we'd be reviewing this and to just have him, you know, keep an eye out, just so he knows.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's it. Okay.
Great.
8.5, five, I'm not sure I'm going to pronounce this right, Isapta?
That one was Withdrawn.
Withdrawn, thank you. All right. All right. We are at the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Saltback.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Are you all tired of hearing me talk?
It's definitely at that point, though, where it's harder to understand you.
Yeah, exactly. As they can talk.
I don't really hear that much, anyway.
I'm going to articulate really hard for you. So on a financial end of things, we have completed our year-end process prior to the departure of Mrs. Gogan. The cover sheets for the Fiscal Year '24 capital planning process are set to go out to department heads before the end of the month. And as highlighted in an earlier meeting, we saw an upgrade to our credit rating. On the personnel side of things, we would like to welcome Deb Dennis as our new Administrative Assistant to the Town Manager. Deb has a wealth of, hey, a wealth of municipal experience, and has done work in town previously, including minute-taking, I believe, for the Finance Committee. So, thank you. Or was it the Board of Health? Both?
Basically, every board.
There we go. Nice. So she's well-versed in what's going on in Winchton. And then our interview panel for the Town Accountant position has been hard at work, and we're hoping to bring a candidate forward shortly. For project updates, Central Street construction is wrapping up for the season. Work at the Winchton Community Park will be slowing down through the winter. However, we expect them to be doing steel work, any type of vertical construction throughout the winter, with the goal of only punchless items to remain in the spring. Electrical and fire suppression work at the library is set to begin in December, and contractors have already been on-site cutting exploratory holes, thanks to our DPW for building a ramp in the basement to ensure accessibility for patrons with mobility issues during the project. Work at the old Murdoch is going to take place in late November through December, sealing the tower for the remainder of winter. Tiffany Newton has been working hard to identify grants to help fix up the barn at Ingleside Park, and we would like, at minimum, to get the exterior brushed up before the amphitheater grand opening. And I have been in talks with Monty Tech to potentially do the Town Hall copula repairs. We felt that it would be a meaningful project for them to work on, and it's something that's kind of high-profile in the town. We haven't had them do a project since they built the fourth floor. It's been a decade or more at this point. So the only concern for that is it's doing height work, which is sometimes hard with students. So we're discussing the possibility of building a new structure on the ground, and then craning it to the roof. So we'll see. But early talks. If that doesn't happen, before the end of winter, we'll be putting it out to bid and having somebody do it first thing in the spring, because we'd like to have it done before the annual town meeting. And on the miscellaneous side of things, thank you to our Town Clerk, Assistant Town Clerk, and all our paid or volunteer election staff for a successful Election Day last week. They did a really good job. We have submitted data to the Column Center for the Town Hall Salary Studies. We're hoping to get a deliverable on that in the coming weeks. And DPW Director Croto and I met with consultants at the wastewater plant to explore the possibility of new revenue streams for the plant. I don't know if you remember, it may have been six months ago now, but the possibility of taking in outside septicage, that might be a revenue driver. So there's an update for that, and we'll have that for your November 28th Board Selectment meeting. We walked Webster Street with Tie-In Bond and Mr. Lionel Cludier to explore the possibility of a grant to clean up that area and extend the bike path, so behind Walgreens, back to Jackson Ave. And in addition to the ramp, electrical and heating upgrades have been made to the library basement in advance of the project that's going to kick off. They're going to be down there temporarily, so they will be open. And congrats to our Health Agent, Jim Abear, who hit the 25-year mark in Winchton Town Hall last week. He joined us in 1997, right out of college, and he is a crucial part of our team. 25 years in one town is really pretty significant. So if you see Jim, make sure you voice your appreciation for him. And that is everything we have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the Town Manager's Report?
Madam Chair, I have one question. When do we get to turn the lights on on Central Street? When do those go on? I can't wait to see those.
Mr. Croto.
Oh, here he comes.
Degel Electric will be back in town on December 1st. They'll be here till all the lights are set, and we're slated to have them on in December, as long as National Grid plays fairly.
Can we do a light switch flipping ceremony?
If that's what your request.
Do you want to coordinate for the Christmas lights?
That's what I meant to ask you.
Would there be lights on the opposite side as well, or just the one side?
Yeah. There's 58 lights total. The northbound lane is about three-quarters complete. All the lights are put together, and the rest will be going in, and should be powered very soon.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else on the Town Manager's Report? Thank you very much, Mr. Saltback. Minutes tonight, the minutes of September 12th are not ready yet. We do have the minutes of Monday, October 24th, 2022. This was the brief meeting we held prior to the special town meeting. I will move to approve them as presented. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I wasn't at that meeting. I abstained.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Going back to the beginning of our agenda, Selectmen's Comments and Announcements. Mrs. Salt, or anything this evening?
Nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. LaPointe, anything this evening?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any public comments or announcements? Thank you. So our next meeting is November 28th. And if there's nothing further, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We are adjourned at 8:30.